All right, I will call this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, February 4th at 6:01 PM. Ask the clerk to call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Aye.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the Bible, on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is a community invocation, which will be given to us by Larry Woodward of Ten Mile Christian Church. Thank you, Larry, for being here.
My pleasure. Let's bow our heads and thank God for all the blessings he's given to this city and to this council. Our dear heavenly Father, you have blessed Meridian in an amazing fashion over the past few years. We have seen our city grow as thousands have poured into it from neighboring states. We used to be a pretty small community, but now we are the second largest city in Idaho. Bless these council leaders and our Mayor Simison as they guide us through the next few years. We have a lot of roadwork going on within the city these days, and periodic closures and lots of heavy equipment bring the potential for injury and accidents. Keep these workmen and the general public safe as this work continues. With rapid expansion, all city services will be strained for a while, and I pray that city services will continue unabated. Let us be aware of potential parklands as the city grows. I keep looking at a piece of land near the corner of Linder and Eustick. Although today it's cut up with ditches and old farm facilities, I can see that someday it could be a beautiful park with water features. There are probably other places just like this one. I continue to be amazed at our low crime rate and the police who watch out for us. May you keep a hand on each officer as they do their duties. Watch over the firemen, medics, and others who are prepared to protect us. Be with our teachers and school administrators as they teach our next generation of young people. Lord, you have richly blessed us. Help us never to forget your hand continues to be on us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much. Item five, or item four, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I'd like to address item 8A. The applicant has requested continuance to February 25th, 2020. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burnt, that is correct.
That's correct. Other than that, looks like we're good to go. So with that change, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, moving item 8A to February 25th, 2020. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Item five is announcements. Just, just two quick items to make sure that these are on all the city council's agenda and the community. We have the Meridian Police Department Awards Ceremony on February 12th, the West State School District. And then we have a joint meeting with West State School District. Sorry, I thought it was this next day, on the 13th, at 5:00 PM, which will be held here at City Council. Just to make sure everyone was aware of those items. Item number six, future meeting topics.
Mr. Mayor, there is nobody signed in for this.
Okay. Then item 7A is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. I'll, I see them back there, so Abby, if you want to come forward? If you could please state your name and address for the record. At least your name and the organization you're with.
Hi, my name is Abby Hutchins, and I'm vice chair of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council.
And my name is Sarah Gonzalez.
And this is going to be our month recap. Okay, so it just got announced that we have a new advisor taking in place of Jody St. Martin. His name is Tim Hendrickson, and this change is going to happen within the next few months. They're going to be going over roles. And then, so our next thing that we're going to be doing are Valentine's Day cards. We're doing this for Renaissance High School. We're also doing it in the other high schools, but we're going to make sure that everyone in Renaissance has a Valentine's Day card, because Logan Dinan actually started this two years ago. He made sure that every single person got a Valentine's Day card, and every single person made sure that they knew that they were important. We've been implementing this throughout other schools as well.
So, Youth Lobby Day, when was it again?
It was last Monday?
Yeah, last Wednesday. And it was a lot of fun, and that's where a bunch of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council went to the Capitol and talked to some representatives and senators about-
Can you pull the mic down?
Sorry. About safe routes to school and the new tobacco lot. And then the Point of Hope Planning Meeting, it is going to be May 2nd on a Saturday from 9:45 AM to 1:30 PM. And it's a run that, is it Logan?
Yeah, Logan, no.
Colin?
Colin started.
Yeah, Colin started this in honor of his sister, and it's just a mental health awareness run.
Yeah, so we started this run as a suicide prevention run. And then, so this flyer is actually from last year. We don't have a current flyer at the moment, so that's not all of the information that's going to be provided. And I can provide that at the next meeting, we just don't have everything planned yet. So I got the date as May 2nd, and I will be providing additional information at each update. And then, our last thing that we're doing in the next month is a Roaring Twenties Murder Mystery Party. In the past, that we, we've done an anti-Valentine's Day party for people. This is going to be on February 28th, so what we're doing is we're just getting together, and it's kind of one of our bonding events. So we're going to be doing games and just getting to know each other better, trying to start wrapping the year up and all of that. Are there any questions? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 8A was moved, and so I, item 8B, public hearing for Hensley Station, H 2019-0120.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's move over.
I believe we still have to open the public hearing and maybe continue it to a different date.
At accurate legal, okay. All right. Then item 8A, public hearing for Sky Mesa Highlands, H 2019-0123, open this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. Oh, I am so sorry. I thought you already did that.
So do I have, do I have a motion for item 8A? Do we need to do, take any further?
You need to make, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you need to make a motion and move it to a future date, to a date specific, February 25th.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I move that we continue this item H-2019-0123 to February 25th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to continue item 8A, 1 and 2, to February 25th, 2020. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Is there a description of why this is being continued to February 25th? Maybe if there's anyone from the audience that would like to know? We certainly don't want to waste anyone's time, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can respond to that if you'd like. The ACHD report was issued late on Friday, and the applicant would like additional time to respond and revise any plans necessary to comply with their conditions.
Excellent.
And to give the council adequate time as well to review the report.
Awesome.
All right. Hearing of those, roll call.
Voiceless.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Okay. Item 8B, public hearing for Hensley Station, H 2019-0120, open this public hearing. We staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Request for annexation and zoning and preliminary plat is before you. This site consists of six acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and is located at 462 North Black Cat Road. The comprehensive plan future land use designation is medium-high density residential, which calls for eight to 15 units per acre. And this proposed project was reviewed under the previous comprehensive plan as it was submitted under, under that plan. Request for annexation and zoning of 7.17 acres of land with an R15 zoning district for the development of 65 residential units at a gross density of 10.83 units per acre, consistent with the medium-high density residential future land use map designation. A preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, consisting of 65 building lots and six common lots on six acres of land for the development of single-family attached and town home dwellings. The plat is proposed to develop in one or two phases. The applicant is unsure at this time if it will be phased. Access is proposed via West Aviator Street, a collector's street along the southern boundary of the site. An emergency access only is proposed via Black Cat Road and arterial street, and that is up here near the northwest corner of the site. Private streets are proposed for internal access. Off-street parking is proposed in accord with UDC standards. An additional 10 spaces are proposed for guest parking along the southern end of the mew, and that is, if you can see my pointer right here. A 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Black Cat Road, and a 20-foot-wide buffer is required along Aviator Street, as proposed. The Director approved a request for alternative compliance to allow the street buffer along Aviator to be located in adjacent building lots rather than in a common lot, as typically required, which will allow the townhomes to be placed closer to the street to enhance the streetscape, consistent with the new urbanism design and the design standards in the Ten Mile Plan. A minimum of 10% qualified open space and one-site amenity is required to be provided within the development. A total of .71 of an acre, or 12%, is proposed, consisting of half the street buffer along Black Cat, the 35-foot-wide common mew, and the common area at the northeast corner of the site. Amenities are proposed to consist of a fire pit with two benches, a 15-foot-by-15-foot shade structure with picnic tables, and a bocce ball court. A variety of structure configurations are proposed, consisting of three single-family attached structures, nine fourplex structures in two different configurations, one rear-loaded fiveplex structure, and three rear-loaded sixplex structures, containing a total of 18 units. Overall, though, there are 65 units. Building materials consist of a variety of horizontal and vertical siding and stucco with stone veneer accents. Color schemes are the same on each of the buildings throughout. Revised elevations were submitted for the units facing Aviator Street that have front porches along at least 30% of the front facade, in accord with the Ten Mile Plan designs guidelines. And those are the units right here that I was just referencing. All structures, single-family attached and town home dwellings, proposed in this development are subject to the design standards in the Ten Mile Interchange Plan and the standards listed in the Architectural Standards Manual. I'll just go over the summary of the commission hearing. Kent Brown, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. David Peterson and Jason Hibbert testified in opposition. Written testimony was received from Kent Brown, the applicant's representative, and he is in agreement with the staff report. Key issues of discussion are as follows. There was public testimony against the proposed townhomes and private streets due to concerns children will be playing in the streets and cars won't fit in the driveways and garages, and concern pertaining to increased traffic congestion in this area. The issues of discussion by the commission are as follows. Concern pertaining to noise impacts to residential development from trains on the adjacent railroad tracks and the need for a buffer in this area. Desire for children's play equipment to be provided as an amenity for the development. Need for pedestrian improvements within the railroad right-of-way along Black Cat Road. And concern that there is enough guest parking provided. The commission made the following change to the staff recommendation. They recommended the applicant work with staff to provide an amenity more conducive to children. And outstanding issue for council, in response to the commission's recommendation for a side amenity more conducive to children, the applicant proposes a bocce ball court. So that is for review by council tonight. And there has been no written testimony submitted since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions. The applicant is here tonight to also testify.
All right. Thank you, Sonia. Any questions for staff at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Real quick, Sonia, can you point out the Purdum Gulch drain that is proposed to remain open?
Yes, it's right here on the northeast corner.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, will the applicant like to make his comments?
For the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho. To begin with, we sought a product that haven't seen much of in Meridian. And particularly in this portion that is in the Ten Mile Plan, you have multifamily, you have single-family to the north on the other side of the railroad tracks, and you have single-family that is on the south side of Franklin Road. And if you go back to the comprehensive plan map, Sonia, for me, I really appreciate that, you, you see our location, and you have, to the west of us, that blue area is low-density employment. The next one is mixed-use employment, and then the next one is general industrial. You have high-density that is closer to the Ten Mile area, and then you have this mixed-use employment that, that surrounds us. And we were looking for a product type that people could purchase that would meet a different price point and still do quality type of work, but provide for those people that quite can't get into a larger single-family home, or they're making that choice because they don't have a need for that, and would choose to own versus rent. I've had both of my children, my sons at least, that have lived in similar type of developments and have, they've been rentals, and yet they're making good salary, they got great benefits with the company that they're with, but it's the price that they have to pay to, to get in there. If you look at the layout on the site, site plan, we have a number of different attached housing units. If you look the very top of the screen, you have a fourplex, a duplex, and then a fourplex. Those are front, front-entry product. They have like a traditional neighborhood, they have the, their private space that is in, in the back of those units, where their patios and so forth are, just like in a regular single-family development. The units that back up to Ten Mile or to Black Cat, they're also those same types of units, and the ones on the east side are too. They, the ones on the east back up to the charter schools, park space or a future sports field. The units in the center are loaded from the rear, and then they have the mew space that's in the middle. It's kind of interesting, my, my youngest son, they lived in a one similar to this where the mew was in the front, and because their family was very young, the kids were happy to play in between the sidewalks that were right in front of the unit. This particular location had lots of playground equipment, but this met the, the need for while they were there. When, when they needed more, then they moved to a different type of, of place where they had more bedrooms and so forth. This, we believe, is why we proposed the amenities that we did. We proposed something that we thought that the target market that we're seeing would be interested in, millennials, and then also people downsizing. We don't anticipate, but we're not saying that single, you know, families wouldn't live there. And that's why, I guess, we've been adamant that trying to stick with amenity. If you have an amenity that people care about, it gets taken care of. I've been doing this for quite some time, and sometimes you put in an amenity and it doesn't get used, and, and very few people want it. We believe the demographic supports what we're proposing, and that's why we've had what we've done. Could you go to the elevation, Sonia, for me? We believe that we proposed a really nice-looking unit. If you look at the, up here, the very top one, you can see that the doors are on the, on the side versus being right up in front. That same thing takes place on, on these other units. Type 2 over here, the door is on the side, the garages are there on that street side. We believe that that just creates a nice character for these buildings. This Aviator Street, there are certain times that the school is going to be really busy. My kids went to Mountain View. You go, at other times when you're, when school's out, it is really, really quiet there, and that's what we believe and why we face these type of units versus turning them around and having the backyards there. And so we believe that it also is pretty to look at, but also a nice place for them to sit on the south side of that project. That's all that I have, unless you have some questions for me? I stand for any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Perrow.
What is the length of the, can you hear me okay? What is the length of the driveway for the alleyloads? Will they have any other parking other than what's inside the two-car garage?
So, townhouses require that you have four parking spaces, two inside and two out. So these are 20-foot pads that allow for that parking.
Okay. And what's the distance between the most eastern boundary of the project and the Compass Building, the Compass School, approximately?
Oh, I'm not very good at that. The closest, 200, 300 feet, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Strater.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was hoping you could expand a little bit on the price point you're expecting to market at. I know that's a challenge to do in a public hearing, but maybe give us a range to speak to how you feel you are addressing the need for more reasonably-priced housing in this area.
Well, the, the main things that end up taking place is that when you have the attached, all of a sudden now you have less property that you're selling versus what you have to purchase those things for. So the, the price is less, but my client said that he's willing to speak to that. Is there any other questions that?
Yeah, I, I mean, given the location right next to a charter school, it sounds like, you could just expand upon, you know, the, the, the why you feel there wouldn't be a lot of schoolchildren here necessitating a play structure amenity, and are you marketing this toward a different group of people? Just give us a flavor for that. And also, I'd like you to expand upon any kind of safety concerns either about this canal, it sounds like there's a canal right here, and possibly a train line.
The, the other side of the, the north side of the railroad tracks, how's that? Has a proposed regional pathway that goes along there. There isn't one proposed on the south, and it's the same tracks that we're adjacent to. I grew up on the Vista Bench next, fairly close to the railroad tracks. I had neighbors that backed up to it. It's not any different than the housing that is there, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could-
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. My apologies, not to put too fine of a point on it, but I, what I'm concerned about is the proximity to the railroad tracks, and if there is a fence next to the railroad tracks proposed, and if you have a fence next to this canal, because I'm just practically speaking, right? And I'm just being really upfront with you, but I'm thinking, okay, you're putting this development right next to a school, and I'm having a hard time believing there are not going to be children located here in this development. So I would just like you to address the, the thought process around the safety.
So there's, there's fences all the way around the entire development, except for those units that face onto Aviator. So there's no fence from them, and as that, that depiction was. The rest, the landscape berm against Black Cat has a fence with the landscape berm, traditional of what you see throughout the community. Then there's a fence along the northerly boundary, and there's a fence between us and the sports field that is to the east of our site. So that's taking place. The, it's not necessarily a canal, it's a drain, so it, it's, we're leaving it open. It's fenced, we're fencing it, so it's fenced also.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brown, yeah, I'll, along Councilwoman Strater's questioning is, I went through the notes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and talked about amenities for children, and then I noticed a bocce ball court. Now, my kids are grown up, and my grandkids are really little. Is bocce ball a thing for kids now? I have no idea. Why not a swing set?
Well, and we talked about that, and my client can also speak to that. The interesting thing is, is you struggle with this kind of development as to what is the most meaningful amenity. The existing home was located in, in this location, and so there's some really nice mature trees, and we believe that that is much better for a gathering space than the other. And we, after hearing planning and zoning, we did add the bocce ball court, and that was that we would give each person that purchased in there their own set of bocce balls. And I know that we spoke to Steve Sidaway, that there, there is some in the city parks, or Kleiner Park at least, and some discussion about the others. I've never played bocce ball, and I don't, and it is the struggle of putting in an amenity, as, as I tried to explain, that really gets used. When it gets used, the, it, it gets taken care of. And as I look at my younger son, when he moved to this community, and, I mean, they had a park facility just like what the city would have, and they didn't take their kids there very often. And the reason being was they were smaller, and we anticipate that maybe a young family might live here, but these are two-bedroom units, they get to that point, they might start looking for some other place to purchase, and maybe this helps them move to that traditional family home versus something else, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brown, and I appreciate your trying to figure out what markets this will end up in, you know, younger adults, older adults, and very young children, so yeah, it's, it was just interesting to see that.
It, I mean- It, I mean, we're definitely here to be approved, and we want to provide an amenity that's meaningful. I guess that's why we haven't thrown in the swing set.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Brown.
Councilman Hoagland.
And this might be a question for Mr. Lucas of ACHD, but one of the things I noticed too, and when I, I work in East Napa now, and sometimes when I take the back way home, I come down Black Cat, and I was surprised when Compass went in that there was no turn lane for that school, for Aviator. I was just shocked. Why, knowing the peak periods where kids are coming and going, or families are coming and going, do you know what's the future of that holds for...
So this is, this is on their capital plan to do improvements. So it's to take place, it's, whether it's one or, you know, two or three years, but that's, that's all that we know.
Nope, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll probably ask Mr. Lucas to weigh in on that, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So I actually can see this property from my backyard. My backyard does bump up to that track, and I can give specifics on exactly when the trains come and go. I'm not concerned about that. The trains come once in the morning, once in the afternoon, they go twice a day, one way east, one way west, it's like 30 seconds. However, being a real estate broker, I would agree with my fellow council members that likely we're, we're not going to, we're going to experience young families moving into that kind of location. And so in the, in the history of my fellow council member, Genesis Mylum, and all that she's done with Todd Lots, I'd like to encourage you to consider putting something in there that's, that's more geared towards children. And not even just because it's next to Compass, but because I think that that is the kind of buyer that's going to come into that location that, you know, wants to own their own property, but just not at an income level that they're going to be able to do it. And that's likely going to be a first-time home buyer, a young family. So if I may encourage you to consider that, your client to consider that. The other thing I'd like to mention is about the safety. So I drive by this multiple times a day. And when Compass went in, I was on Planning and Zoning and asked them several times about whether there would be students that would be walking up and down Black Cat, or whether there would, you know, why is there not sidewalks? Why is there not a crosswalk? Why is there... I really wanted all of that to be required. I really wanted that turn lane as well, which I understand is going to be somewhere between 21 and 25. But I had a lot of concerns when Compass went in, and so this makes me even more concerned that we're going to have, there are people that walk down along the tracks fairly frequently, not anything that's concerning. I don't have any safety issues where I live. But I think the more people you add into that, the more dense you make it, the more those, those issues can become prevalent. So I just, you know, being, I don't, I don't love residents of any sort, whether it's townhomes or multifamily, single-family, being that close to the school. However, I would like to say that I think that the project itself is designed well. I think the buildings look great. I love the, the design of how they're done. I think they're interesting, the colors are great. So let me applaud you on how those were designed. But all that to say, I wouldn't mind hearing your thoughts some more on if there's been some conversations with neighbors or more conversations with, with the commission maybe on the safety in that area. I did get to read the commission minutes, but I didn't feel like they got into that too much.
So as part of our requirements, from reading the report, you see that we're required to do sidewalk in front of our project. We're finishing out Aviator, that is a collector on our side, and then we put in sidewalk. And those arterial improvements are done by ITD or ACHD. And that's, you know, the biggest part of that is the railroad crossing. And how do you put those types of improvements? And so that's when those types of things are there. There were a few people that testified at that first hearing, and it was interesting that they had students that went to that school. And I suggested that they personally, you know, it used to be Terry Little that you would talk to, go talk to them because they're there to help fix your problems. And if that's an issue, then they can study it and they can make that happen. As a part of this project, we're giving them the right-of-way section that they're asking for, so that they would have the room to do that improvement where previously they would have had to purchase that. So that helps along those lines when development does take place. And more impact fee money to help do their capital improvement projects. I'm going to let the client speak.
Are there any further questions?
Thank you.
My name is Jim Merkel, Northern Land Development, The Applicant. My address is 2150 North Cantor Place in Eagle. Couple thoughts. The market we're trying to hit, we dug up some information about the median home price of new construction in this part of Meridian. So in 2019, it was roughly 340,000, it was in the mid-3s, 360, I think, for the year, maybe it was. In the fourth quarter, it was, it creeped up to like 368. Our goal on this project is to be about 20% under the median, so 250 to 280. We're trying to bring something to the market that, you know, like Kent said, maybe a single mom, maybe a millennial couple with no kids, maybe empty nesters that downsize prior to go into a retirement place. Some try to provide workforce housing, somebody can come in and buy, get some equity before they're ready to go on and, and have a typical suburban 8,000-square-foot lot, five-bedroom home somewhere in the vicinity. It's kind of hard to, for millennials, 20-year-old, even in the 30s, to get started when home prices are raising up to almost 400,000 bucks. You've got to save a lot of money. So we're trying to bring something to fit the market on that issue. Regarding the sidewalk issue, like Kent said, we're putting our frontage along Black Cat and along Aviator, giving up the right-of-way. There was some talk about the concern of the existing situation on Black Cat with people walking down it. That's going to be solved when ACHD does their five-lane, like Councilman Pearl said, 21 to 25 is the plan. And I'll bet the year or so that they're constructing it, there won't be anybody walking down it. You can imagine when arterial roads are under construction with ACHD going from two to five lanes, nobody's walking down that during that period. I mean, they'll, they'll provide those sidewalks from Cherry Lane to Franklin during that time. I think that was everything I wrote down.
Any further questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Hey, Jim, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Thanks for being here. Got a quick question for you in regard to this application and if it's going to be investor-owned, where the entire subdivision is being bought by a company that deals with renters, rentals specifically?
No, this is a townhouse project for sale.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Barton.
Thank you. To comment on the pertham drain in the northeast corner, is the width of that easement such that the fence is only on one side of it on your property?
Correct.
Okay, so there's not an out parcel?
No.
Okay.
No, you, are you looking, are you looking at the same thing I'm looking at? So the northeast corner, you can see kind of a line diagonal across there? That's the edge of the easement.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barton.
So that, the fence that was referenced earlier would be continuous along the northern perimeter, jagged diagonal, and then go south?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Barton.
Follow-up on that, there's reference on Aviator, which is, as a collector, instead of having that in HOA common lot, that it would be in an easement. Is that an easement in the benefit of an HOA who's going to...
Correct, and that's only west of our access, where the lot's front, Aviator. You can see to the east of our access, that would be the typical 20-foot lot, like in a normal subdivision. West is the lot's front, Aviator. And that easement would be so it's commonly maintained.
Okay, that was the next question.
The individual units don't maintain, it's commonly maintained throughout the thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Barton.
Assistant follow-up, that's relatively unusual, which I thought was interesting. I mean, it's very creative, and I get the new urbanism component to it, and the TLIP and how it promotes it. But is it literally the entire front yard, which I guess might make sense, is the easement or is there...
Correct, correct.
Okay, there's no portion where the townhome owner would be maintaining his front yard?
On those, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the last thing on...
Councilman Barton.
It's also somewhat unusual to have that proximity to a collector's street. Is there, was there discussion either at ACHD or Planning and Zoning that has expressed any concern about what that collector's going to be full build out of this area and having 11 units facing very busy road?
Yeah, it's, it, it is a little bit more common than you're lead to believe. There's areas around this valley and other valley, other metropolitan areas where collectors are fronted by townhomes, not on, not the whole collector, but certain segments of the collector. And it's not that unusual. From a, from a streetscape, it's great. Instead of seeing another berm and a fence, I mean, you're going to see some, you know, architectural of the fronts of the townhomes. So we feel it creates a good entrance for people coming into the development, they're going to turn off Black Cat. On the south side, they'll see the school, and the north, they'll see some frontage of units and pull in. It's just kind of an idea we thought of that would be nice for the community.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barrett.
Just reviewing my notes, Jim, I would also be in favor of an amenity that's more children-focused instead of the bocce ball. I know, you're not...
Loud and clear, we heard it. In fact, we've got a, I think Kent has a sample as a backup amenity instead of the ball, the bocce ball was for the children. Everywhere I see bocce ball courts, they're used, so I'm an old shuffleboard player, so...
Curly, curly. Are there any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Before we get into the public testimony, I'd like Justin, if you wouldn't mind coming up, because I think that the issues you may be able to help address is where a lot of the conversation is going to be going, so. Get your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Justin Lucas. I'm here representing the Ada County Highway District. My business address is 3775 Adam Street in Garden City, Idaho. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. I think I heard a couple, but I'll allow you to guide me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, I'll kick things off. Thank you, Justin, for being here. And my question is, when I was, before I even was aware that this development was coming, was the fact that there's a school, and there was no turn lane for that, for people to pull off and allow traffic, and especially with the railroad tracks there. What, what was the, what was the thinking, and how did that transpire? Just your thoughts on that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, if you look at the configuration of Compass Public Charter School, that lot that they're built on doesn't actually have an extreme amount of frontage on Black Cat Road. And I don't know if there's a parcel map available that we can look at. There is one on the front page of the ACHD staff report. Obviously, what we're talking about is not a part of this application. The charter school was a previous application from the, from Compass Public Charter School to City of Meridian, and that's how it has already been acted on. And I don't know if you can see it here on the aerial, but there's several single-family lots, or maybe they're small businesses, I don't know, especially to the south, that front Black Cat Road. And when we add in a turn lane, usually we're able to do that through development when the developer has control over the frontage of the, of the property facing the roadway. Because when we add in those lanes, oftentimes we need space to do that. And in this specific situation, here we go. You can see Aviator, I don't know if I can run the mouse here. Aviator comes in, I think it's, so the parcel in question tonight is right here. Aviator comes in about right here, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And then there's still several homes here that have access points onto Black Cat Road. And the question is, could we get a significant turn lane and everything in, in the right-of-way that we have? And what I'm, what I'm guessing is, is we probably were not able to when public, when the charter school went in, without having, if we don't have the right-of-way and the, and the applicant has no ability to get that right-of-way, then ACHD is not able to put in, require an applicant to put in a turn lane. Now, to the north, I don't know exactly how that would work. I'm pointing us to the south, but typically, if we're going to have a turn lane, we would want access to that turn lane from the north and from the south for it to be fully functional. If you have it just going one way, you lose a lot of the function of the turn lane. So I don't know if that exactly answers your question. And as I say, we're talking about a previous application that has already been acted upon, but I, I did my best there to try and answer it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Lucas, no, I figured, you know, right-of-way probably figured into that, and it looks like to me, as I drive that, that homeowners, there are things happening, like they know that things are going to be expanding in the future. Can you give us any little, little more tighter timeline than 2025?
Yeah, you know, our capital development plans are very dependent on funding. We are focusing a lot of our efforts, as you can see, on different parts of Meridian as we speak. 10 Mile Road is under active construction, there's a lot of work being done in other parts of Meridian. We are shifting some of our focus to South Meridian, Locust Grove Road, South Eagle Road, et cetera. So I can't give you an exact timeline on Black Cat. It is certainly in our plans to widen it. It is not, it's not, it's not being designed right now, so it's certainly not within a three-year window. It would have to move into our plans to bump that up. Fortunately, you, as a city council, have an opportunity to weigh in on the timing of improvements through our annual request process. And if you believe Black Cat should be moved up and should be emphasized due to some of these issues, you have that opportunity to voice that to the ACHD Commission.
Just if I could just piggyback on that, because since the railroad crossing came up, traditionally, I know the railroad has a significant impact in terms of the timing of when these projects are being completed, because they typically construct their own railroad crossings, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Mayor, you're correct. We have to work very carefully with the railroad on, on any modifications to the crossings that are there. The, the one crossing we are improving this year is the crossing there at Linda Road, actually, just a couple, I guess, a mile over here. No, it goes Black Cat, 10 Mile. Then, I live in Meridian, I should know this, but, so a couple miles to the west, and we actually got federal funding for that crossing. It's, it's a relatively complex process to get those crossings fully improved, and they're not cheap. The railroad constructs them, but we have to pay the railroad to do those, to do those improvements. And this is a very similar situation going on to the pedestrian connectivity, which I believe was another question. Those railroad crossings represent a significant barrier to pedestrians, I'm, there's no doubt about that. And solving that is difficult. Fortunately, that's one of the reasons we're doing the one on Linda Road, because there's a high school right there, just to the north on Linda Road. And we struggled with that for many years, and finally, we're able to get the money through the state of Idaho to do that crossing and complete that, that connection. And I could see a similar situation here. I wish we could say we'll be able to go out and do it next year, but it's not very likely just because of the complexities of working with the railroad.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just a couple of comments. I attended the Transportation Commission last evening and substituting for one of my fellow council members who was watching remotely. And I do know that they're working on a recommendation in terms of prioritization for ACHD. However, I don't recall this particular project being within the top 15, so we'll need to take a look at that. I was curious if you could provide some feedback on this particular development. Clearly, they're granting an easement to widen the road eventually. What does that look like? I mean, how close does that then put those homes? I mean, how close does that then put those homes that are facing Black Cat and Aviator?
So, I don't want to get into the City of Meridian's policies. What ACHD does is re-require right-of-way dedication. It's typically 48 feet from the center line of the current roadway. We end up with 96 feet total of, of right-of-way. Then the city does have requirements related to street buffering and things like that that fall outside of ACHD's right-of-way. So you typically have an additional 20 feet of landscaping or whatever it is that the city is requiring. So it's outside of our right-of-way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I'm hoping that staff could then comment upon our own requirements for buffering and whether our widened road in the future from ACHD plus our requirements is going to make sense and give us enough of a buffer between the townhomes and, and the street.
Sonya, can you answer that question?
Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader. We would need to allow for that future right-of-way dedication at this time and have the buffer provided outside of that area in order for there to be adequate buffer once that's dedicated.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Sonya, in your opinion, looking at this project, do you believe that there would be adequate space for this? The reason I'm asking is that oddly enough, in the Transportation Commission, there was a particular piece of roadway that came up as a discussion where there were a bunch of townhomes and other homes far too close to the road that then is going to need to be widened, and it was creating kind of a nightmare with the neighbors. So that, that's the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I believe it's a definite concern. I, I don't know what the actual, you know, number of feet is, the additional right-of-way that would be dedicated, and how that would impact the site.
Mr. Mayor, and the, yeah, the applicant can likely answer this question, but just looking at the site plan, all measurements are taken from the future right-of-way line, so the applicant's assuming that they're going to dedicate this space, and all of their measurements related to buffer and everything else are measured from what would be the future right-of-way line, not the current right-of-way line, which is typical among development. ACHD prefers that, too. We don't want to be buying private property in the future. We preserve the right-of-way through the development process, so in the future, we do not have to purchase right-of-way. Now, that being said, are there projects, development projects that happened, you know, in the 90s, that, that we did not preserve the, the right-of-way we, we needed, and here we are in 2020? Certainly there are, and certainly we do buy that land. But in this case, we've gotten a lot better about that, and it's very rare when we have new developments coming in, let's say in the last 15, 20 years, where we're having to go back and buy property.
And if, well, if I could just add, you know, I'm new to this process up here, but you should never see an application before you to this point that doesn't have the, already the prescribed right-of-way that's required for the anticipated current road configuration, but it does not mean in the future, if that road needs to be widened, that there will be adequate space.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I'm new, so I'm still learning the particulars.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you very much for being here. So, coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission, we didn't have ACHD representatives that we were able to ask questions to, and it's very helpful. So thank you very much for your time outside of business hours to be here and answer our questions.
Mr. Mayor, council, glad to be here. That's, that's why I come. Just for staffing reasons, we're not able to provide staff at all land use hearings, but we do our best. My staff specifically tries to come to every single city council meeting when there is an application that there may be ACHD-related questions. And hopefully, you don't have any when I'm not here. Hopefully, if I'm not here, though, they're really hard, and you just have to figure it out yourself.
Thank you, Justin, appreciate it very much. All right, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, there were no advance signups.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here who would like to testify, I'd ask you to please come forward at this time and say your name and address for the record. Well, in that case, I'll see if the applicant then would like to have any final comments.
Again, for the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood. Sonya, could you go back to, like, the aerial or the comp plan map? I want to speak, Commissioner Borden asked about the collector.
Are you driving, or am I?
I'll let you drive. My wife has to drive, too, so. I'm used to it. Let's, let's pan to the left, if we could, a little bit. So, our property is, is located right here, and that collector, the school owns all of this property, including the, the sports field that's, that's here. That collector basically comes this direction. There's a short distance that that can really go, because the 10 Mile Church is in, there's apartments in, then Entrada Farms has been approved there. So it's not like a normal collector that is going a long distance. And so, that was another reason that we thought that this was a good opportunity to do what we did, is that versus having a street that's going to have traffic on it all the time with lots of people traveling. Basically, what that road's going to have to do is it comes in off of Black Cat, and it's going to have to go down to Franklin. In fact, there's a public road connection that goes through Entrada that kind of follows along the Purdum Drain on the north side that's a ways off. So it would have to meander through this way to get to there, is kind of how that would have to go. Most likely, traffic's going to go south to get onto Franklin and get to the 10 Mile Interchange. We, we did provide that photo with the slides and so forth. If you think that there's going to be children there, and that's the, the one that we should do, we generally get a lot of activity with a picnic cover, and, and that, and that was why we had our original submittal. If you want to pick one or the other, that, that's fine. As we said, we're here, we're here to be approved. We think that we've done a good job and provided something that is really needed in Meridian for sale-by-ownership with a smaller footprint. The only difference that you can really go to is go to condos. And I, I've never really liked that condo market. It, it ends up being kind of difficult. This gives people an opportunity to get into our marketplace that maybe couldn't afford to be into the marketplace. And yet, it's a prime location, close to Franklin Road. It's a short distance going Franklin to go to the facilities that are in Nampa, so you're realistically halfway either direction. That's why we believe that we'd have a bunch of young professionals. My oldest son's 40, and he lives in a similar facility, but he's renting. He likes that he has a garage. He likes that he has those facilities. And so we think that someone would be able to get into that market, and that's why we feel really strongly about it. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I know I kind of joked around and just about, former council member Mylum's a love for tot lots, but I wanted to share some more thoughts on why I suggested it, if I may. That area doesn't really have a lot of parks close by, especially not within walking distance. So I, I can walk to Fuller Park from where I'm at, but you can't get there from this location. And from what I can tell from the comp plan, there aren't going to be any, any parks designated in that, in that area. In addition, I don't think that Compass has any outdoor facilities that maybe the public would use like they would at another elementary school in the area where they have access to. So if Compass had some open play areas that the public had access to, I, I may be less inclined to suggest putting in some play, you know, play structures. But because of lack of access really to any other park or play area, that's, that's why I had suggested that, so just wanted to clarify.
To the, to the east of us, that's at least planned, the current plan is for that to be a sports field, so kicking a ball around or something like that might take place. But I doubt.
I'm sorry.
If, yeah, that they would put playground equipment or anything like that there.
Councilwoman Pearl.
My apologies, I thought you were finished. If I remember correctly from their application, they intend that to be a, a track with some green space in, in it. So yeah, I mean, somebody could go run or use it for soccer, but I don't know they're actually going to have any structures that are for smaller children.
Correct. I, I'm not aware of that being on that location.
So a question. Do we, is the Collector Road, because it is owned by them, are they assuming that they don't want to be connected, that they're fine to be? Or it's just expected because that's what's, that's what the 10 Mile Plan requires is a road through this area? I'm just curious. And once, when you say that they own the property that's your Collector's going to go through, is that what we want? Need, desire?
It, it is a part of the 10 Mile Plan for this Aviator to be a Collector. It, what's kind of interesting, in the 90s, all the new developments, you would have mile sections being developed at, at the same time, and they would have what they called a mid-mile residential collector, and they went in and died. And that's kind of what the city's getting out of this because of already the existing development that's gone in. So it's traveling a short distance, but eventually, it's going to have to go down and connect to Franklin. And I think that that would be where most of the traffic is going to go, is go down to Franklin and travel that direction. But one of the things that's kind of interesting, I know that a lot of the traffic on Black Cat is currently coming from Pine. Pine goes in, down there in Dead Ends. I know that there's been, if you will, a, a location where the bridge needs to go in, and the landowner wasn't willing to sell, and he's recently changed his mind because of land prices and so forth. And so with Pine going through, that would dramatically change the traffic that's on Black Cat. And currently, right now, they've got 5,000 vehicle trips going back to the west that really want to go the other direction, and they're, they're forced to go. So, again, it's, it's time, and how quickly those things happen, they probably will happen at the same time Black Cat gets done, and I know the developers want to go forward, and those are future applications that haven't even been submitted to the city yet, so. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, the question you asked earlier, there is 25 feet existing right-of-way on Black Cat from center line, and the applicant is proposing to dedicate 48 feet from center line on this property. So those, those road improvements will be accounted for, planned for.
Sonya?
Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Hogland.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing on H2 2019-0120.
Second.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Maybe a little bit of discussion. I, I think the distinction for me, at least, in thinking through this one, we've seen other developments with townhomes. I think the difference here to me is this really seems like a priority area where we're planning to put some density. There's already been some preview of this. It may not meet what I would desire to see from an open space perspective, but this does feel like an area where we're planning for more density and where it's appropriate. And for that reason, I'm supportive of approving it. With the addition of the tot lot.
Is there any further conversation on the motion? If not, all those in favor, have the motion sigified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose knee? The ayes have it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I move to that we approve H2019-020 as presented in staff report for February 4th, and with the condition that instead of a bocce ball court, that a play structure suitable for young children be installed as amenity with the others that are proposed.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. I thought when you asked for discussion, that you were asking for discussion on the motion to close the public hearing, not on the.
I, I was.
Okay.
So we've just moved forward to a, a motion that does not yet have a second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion is.
Does that motion include a council waiver for the Purdum Drain?
Mr. Mayor, Sonya, could you say that again, please?
Does council's motion on the table here include a waiver for tiling the Purdum Drain to allow it to remain open?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Council, if I may interject that, I meant to do that, but also tiling of the Purdum, waiver of the Purdum Drain tiling, so.
Second agrees.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. I had more to add before we, are we going to be able to discuss?
Yeah, yeah, we have a motion a second, and now.
Different process.
Motion a second, so now is there any discussion on the motion?
Thought I was going to lose my chance there.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to just share my experience with Black Cat Road of my May, since I am one of those people that comes from Pine and drives on a Black Cat every day. We've seen significant increase in traffic, especially during rush hour, because of the congestion now on 10 Mile. So once the 10 Mile Interchange went in, and now Black Cat's getting very congested because people are figuring out that it's much faster to take Black Cat than to get backed all the way up to the Chevron on 10 Mile and sit there and wait for the light when they can make a couple of right turns and get onto the 10 Mile Interchange. So, and that's all happening at the same time that children are coming into the Compass School at 7:30 and 8 o'clock in the morning. And I had strongly recommended that, that as council member Hogland had stated, that there be some safety measures put in when Compass went in, and there weren't. And Compass promised that there wouldn't be children wandering around in that area, and there are children wandering around there all the time. They run out there for track. They have their track uniforms, they're out there for PE, they're walking along near the railroad tracks. They are walking in the gravel areas on either side of Black Cat. And so that was what I feared would happen when Compass went in, and I wouldn't say it's all the time every day, but you definitely see it in those peak times that traffic is coming through. So I do have a lot of concern, because I, I myself am always very aware of who might be walking around in that area. And so while I think that the project is, is great, the design, I like the size, I, I love the fact that there's affordable housing coming in. That's, that's huge for me to see that in the business that I'm in, and also because I, I just meet people so frequently that aren't able to buy right now. And so, the project itself, I have no concerns, but I'm wondering if there's anything else we can discuss that might alleviate some, some potential safety issues. There's a part of me that's tempted to vote no, because I'd like to wait until Black Cat gets widened before we start adding projects of this density along, especially along that section where you've got a stoplight, and then you have a school, and then you have a railroad track, and then you have another major road, Pine, which is going to become a thoroughfare coming out, and a lot of people turning left and right out of there. And then you have Cherry Lane, and, and it's a half mile of just constant possibilities for pedestrian concerns. So that's just my two cents and my daily experience that I have there. So, I don't know, this, this is a struggle for me. It's not because it's near my house at all, it's just more along the lines of, I'm not concerned about there being construction, I'm, I'm welcome that there would be. I'm welcome that there would be construction, that there would bring more units, especially affordable units, especially in that area where we're seeing a lot of apartments go in, that there might be homes that folks can own. Very, very much in support of that. But I do have a lot of concerns about individuals turning right and left off of Aviator and not having any kind of, you know, traffic measure other than a stop sign. So just throwing that out there for consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Pro, concerns are certainly justified, you know, as I looked at this, same thing. And in fact, if this was a huge development of single-family homes, you're going to have 300 homes back there, I couldn't support anything because of that impact it would have. And when I looked at this, there are two things that kind of tilted it for me was, number one, it meets a price point that is certainly needed in this community. You know, my own kids, and you've heard me talk about this before, that last year, they finally bought a house, but trying to find a house, they've got small kids, young professionals getting started their career, trying to find that house they can purchase was very difficult. And the other is, it's, what was it, 65 units? And I felt that impact was something that, well, yes, there are going to be times, there's going to be backups. It's not going to be as significant as it would be with a major development. So weighing those items, it seemed like this would work for this location, but as it grows, and ACHD is going to have to make sure, and we can encourage them with our process of saying what we think the priority areas are. And so that's where it tilted it for me, if that helps.
It does. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I, Councilwoman Pro, I definitely can see the concern. I guess what I'm struggling with is I don't see how this applicant can solve for that concern. If you had an idea, I'm open to hearing it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Really my only thought on that, unfortunately, would be to just delay for a little bit until there are some more, there's some more roadway and sidewalks that can go in there. So there's going to be a sidewalk put in, but it's going to go to nowhere. It's just going to be right there in front of the, and there isn't any, all of those homes that sit to the south around the county still, so there's, we can't require any of them to have sidewalks all the way down to Franklin, and it's going to be a significant amount of time before Franklin connects the side, you know, that there's probably seven private homes in the county that are still there between Franklin and where this property is. So it's going to be a good long time before there are any safety elements put in for pedestrians. So I don't, I wouldn't say I have a solution other than that, you know, it may not be the right timing for this. Trust me, I'm torn, because I very much think that the project is great and that I would love to see those additional units brought into Meridian, because I think that they're designed really well, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess in reflecting on that, you know, part of where my thought process is, this is a good project, and that we need to think, as difficult as it is, we do need to have kind of a longer-term timeframe in mind as we approve things. It seems like a good project. The timing may not be perfect, but I think that the other factors for me outweigh that concern. Ultimately, I wouldn't deny the project over that, just because I feel this is a priority growth area. This is a place that we've planned for density. If this project were proposed in another location, that was not an area that seemed like we were prioritizing density, I think I would feel differently about the concern. That's all.
Any further discussion on the motion? Not? Quick, we'll call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Apologies. Pro.
Nay.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sir, thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Item number nine, future meeting topics. Anything for consideration from council? If not, do I have any other motions this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Ayes have it.